Thank you to the Catholic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Go sit down. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Bernie Drennan, please. Okay. First item on the agenda is minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 7th, 2015 with your extension, Mr. LaFalle.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep, we got that. Understand here. All right.
Oh, did I ask for David?
Yep, forgot. Tonight's meeting is being both video and/or audio taped, and if anyone else is videotaping or audiotaping it, please let me know now. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll go to old business.
Uh, Mr. What about you first?
Okay. Mr. Nardi.
Okay.
Okay. And we're gonna go to comments and concerns. Does anybody wish to address the board?
Yes. I want to follow up on two dates that were supposed to be picked for burden, the bell towers.
Yes, we will have something for you after the annual town meeting. Come on.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna plan something after the meeting. Something after the meeting. So, are you looking for category dates that we can do that third week of May?
That's fine. Second, give me a date, the second week of May and one the third week of May.
Pick a date.
It's gonna have to be the weekend of 17th, because it's at the town meeting. Um, when are the weekends? I don't know. Is it gonna have them come out, Brett?
Preferably before during the week, but if you can only make weekends, all.
I don't know. Um, Monday, the 18th? I don't think you want Monday, the 18th, in the afternoon. Mondays work pretty good for me.
What time?
I don't want to anyway. Two or sometime two or after would work great.
That's one day, you mean, another one?
Twenty-fifth, the week after. Actually, uh, is that number? It is. Yes. No, that's quite good. Twenty-sixth?
That's good. After two?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments and concerns? Yes?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to bring something up. Um, my name's Mike Morel. Obviously, I'm candidate for a select.
Uh-uh, no, it's not about candidates. We don't allow, this is not a candidate forum.
No, I'm just making a general statement. Um, I'd like to, I'd just like to discuss something with the board. I've been having a problem, as we know, the Town of Warren has two new police cars. Here's the picture here, the two new SUVs. Uh, on several dates, I've been, where I'm not here in town, I've had problems with what appears to be, uh, police cars doing inappropriate things, spying on me. Um, so I, so I, so I've been doing some video of police cars, uh, entering the private property. Here's Chief Spakowski driving through on April 3rd at 8:48 in the morning. Then we have Little Joey LaFlower coming through at 4:19, uh, on 4:19, 4:10 PM. Uh, and then, and then, uh, the next day, on April 10th, at 4:53 PM, was Sergeant Joseph LaFlower. So, I, I have three, three examples that I brought here today, and there have been issues on a daily basis of police cruisers, uh, I don't know if stalking is the right word, but, or maybe harassment's the right word, of the place where I work. So, I don't understand why me, as a candidate for selectmen, have to deal with this harassment of the vehicles going back and forth, taking pictures out their window with their cellphones. Um, so I just wondering if you had an explanation for that?
Do you even aware of anything that was going on like that? If you want to leave us copies of that, and you wanna give us some type of a statement, we'll see what we can find out.
Okay. Is, is, could, obviously, we can't, we already know the chief's involved, 'cause here's a picture of the chief's car here, driving between the tires, so, um, so, so the chief or anybody from the department has not made any of the three of you aware that they're doing this, is what you're saying?
I am saying that first time I heard about it was tonight. We will happily, we will happily look into it. If you want to give us pictures and leave some type of a written statement, we will look into it and see what we can find out.
Okay. And the other question I have for the board is, uh, if, since this seems to be the case that I'm being harassed while working here in town, I mean, is this, does this seem to be an issue of voter, voter fraud, or intimidation, or whatever? Because, I mean, there's no reason why police cars should be, you know, uh, driving on personal property. They're also, at the same time, following vehicles into Palmer, up to Whiskey Hill, so obviously, they're doing other things inappropriate besides just this, so. Um, so, so I, one, I think this is inappropriate. I don't know if it's really harassment or what it is, but, um, but as a candidate, I feel it's just, you know, it seems to be something special just to me, and it shouldn't be happening. So, I mean, we have elections coming up, and I don't, you know, if this is what the, what somebody from the police department thinks is, uh, tampering with elections or whatever, or intimidating myself or other people, I think it's wrong.
Very good. Like I said, leave us some pictures, give us a written, some written information, and we'll look into it.
Okay. And then the very last thing is, I had spoke to the board here at the last meeting. Uh, I have with me a copy of the June 23, 2011 letter that was written to me from Mr. David Delansky, uh, regards to the complaints against the chief of police. Uh, it was mailed from the West Warren Post Office on June 22, 2011, and here's the letter. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Can I see that?
Yeah, sure. So, like I said, I wasn't lying or saying anything. I said, "You wrote me the letter," so.
I have no problem saying that I agree that I did probably did write this. I have no problem saying that, but I also say that it wasn't on the subject that you brought up last week at the last meeting. My statement was that, uh, you made a statement about the chief lying, never wrote an, never wrote a letter about that, that letter I did sign and so forth, but it was nothing about the chief lying. All right. Any other comments and concerns?
Yes, but, but there were several complaints, and one was a complaint about the chief of police. One was a complaint about the dispatcher posting inappropriate sexually explicit content on the computer. And then she's also the same one that wrote the trap, that wrote the trash talk on me on that website. And I complained to Valiant Delansky Suzo. I wrote three written complaints against the chief of police, and the board never did nothing.
Uh, we asked for more information. If you read the letter yourself.
But, but, yeah, but I already sent you three sets of emails to all of you outlining all the complaints, and you wrote me this letter saying.
Uh, that's enough. I agree, I wrote the letter. The letter was not what you said last week. It said something about lying to the, about the chief lying, that, I never wrote anything about that. You have the right to bring it up. If you want to submit it to the board, that's fine. Other than that, we answered the letter, we answered your complaint in that letter, and that's basically where it is, and it was a long time ago.
Right, right, but you didn't, but you didn't, but you didn't do anything to discipline the police, the chief of police. I, I gave you, I even sent you the factual evidence, which I have all the, I have exactly everything I mailed, you certified, returned receipt, proving what the chief did wrong, and this is the letter you wrote me, and you didn't discipline the chief.
And the letter stands as.
The dispatcher is still allowed to post.
And the letter stands as written. We're not gonna discuss it again. It was a long time ago.
Right.
If you, I wrote, I admit that that letter did get written, but it wasn't what you said last week. That was my concern about what you commented on lying and so forth. I never wrote any letter about lying. Uh, that letter happened a long time ago, and the matter is basically settled, it's fired the board's concern to this time, and will not be discussing it again. Any other body else for comments and concerns?
So, should I file?
Mr. Corday. You wanted to say something?
I was just giving Mr. Morel the courtesy of a closure, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Is Mr. Morel's?
He's done. Yes.
Very close?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, for a couple weeks now, I've been inquiring about potential violations to town bylaws concerning smoke plowing. Initially, the chief was, I believe, directed to produce some information, and at last week's meeting, you instructed Joe LaFlower to bring some information back to the board.
Uh-huh.
Could you please give me the results of the investigation?
You begin to, Mr. LaFlower. All right, we have some, we have some answers here. If you'd like to look at these after, from what I can see here, Jim, it looks like that there was numerous complaints about pushing snow in the road. I don't know who made them and so forth. Um, the people, from what I understand here, were advised that they couldn't do that and not to do it again, and that's what I see here.
Uh, for the benefit of the television audience, the viewers at home, was there any assessment to a citation reflecting payment of a fine or court appearance?
I did ask the question last week to Mr. LaFlower, and his answer to me was that the, uh, the bylaw says that there could be a citation, all right, but it didn't, it was up to the officer, and that the people that were going here, uh, as far as I can tell here, Jim, is that there was not a citation written, they were advised to cease and desist.
So the short answer is, there's been no financial penalties?
That's what I seen just being defined here.
Does the board have an opinion on the potential for that, and is it?
No, I think, but, I think the bylaws explains itself, meaning that there could be a penalty, a citation written, but like David said, there hasn't been. Do we think there should be? I mean, there's about, what, nine here? Three, four, five, six, seven, seven, eight, nine, nine of them.
At last week's meeting, the highway superintendent indicated that, uh, last year's activity, I believe he reflected four occasions to speak with the same offender, and this year, he suggested, I believe it was three or four occasions for the same offender. Uh, don't you think the resolution of the problem would be to turn it up a notch and become a little bit more aggressive, disregard the verbal warnings, and start issuing citations? I, I think that's a method that might get the message across.
I agree with that.
I agree. I think we should send a letter to the chief of police saying that once somebody's been warned once, we would end, we would request that citations be issued.
Okay, thank you.
No problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. So that will go to the chief of police, and please inform him and everyone at the police station that they should, they should definitely tick it once per, you know, after they've only been warned once. One warning, then tick it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, second question, if you will, please, pertaining to Mr. Lavash's investigation, pertaining to highway equipment being operated with rejection stickers. Has the finalization of that investigation taken place?
The board is in, received something, additional information yesterday. We will be looking at it, and it will be resolved shortly. So the information is in.
All right. Does that include the interest of the other town agency, the police department operating with a rejection sticker as well?
Uh, I don't think that was part of this, but we will look into that also.
You'll look into that one as well?
Yep.
When do you think information or finalization will be brought to this?
I think that within the next two weeks.
We discussed, we were gonna put something down in the next couple of weeks.
We'll put something down in the next couple of weeks, Jim.
There'll be a resolution in two weeks?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I did talk to, as I said, to the chief of police and to Tom. Uh, I had talked to Tom again last week, and Tom has told me that there will definitely be nothing on the road that doesn't have a valid sticker, and he's actually going to bring everything to inspection station all at the same time, so all the stickers will run out at the same time, and there will be no further action as far as running something that wasn't, that didn't have a sticker in its proper safety. Also, my understanding right now that there is still one cruiser that has a rejection sticker on it, but is not for safety items, and that has to be fixed within 60 days, I think.
Thank you.
So they will be working on that also, and the chief was informed of the same thing, that we want nothing on the road that could be a liability to the town.
That's the one that has a computer problem, and they have to run 100 miles for a computer reset.
Yep. They did bring, the one that we're talking about, and Bob is right, we, they did bring the one that set the rejection sticker on it, two, two to get fixed. Supposedly, it's fixed, but they're also advised that they had to run, put so many miles on it before, that because it's an electrical type of thing, that before they know if indeed it was completely fixed, we will continue to be monitoring that also.
Thank you.
Where do they bring it to have it fixed?
They would have to bring it to a certified repair shop that would have, would also have to get stickers. I don't know the exact place. I'll find out.
It really wouldn't matter where they took it. It's a cycle in the computer. The computer house is cycle works off, and it takes that long before it will shut the light off. If your light on, the dash bulb goes on, it takes a certain amount of mileage on the car before that will reset.
I was just asking where they normally bring it.
We'll, we'll find out. Anything else on comments and concerns? All right, we're gonna go to correspondence.
Mr. Chair, letter from Anac Foster Wheeler Environmental, Environmental Infrastructure, Inc., excuse me, regarding 2015 yearly operational plan for right-of-way management CSX Transportation, Inc. Correspondents from the Warren Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015, at 6:45 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room to consider adoption of three proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Number one is to add four point acres from Hardwick Knitters Fabrics Mill to the Mill Conversion Overlay District. The second one is to allow the medical marijuana treatment centers by special permit of planning board in the Mill Conversion Overlay District and the Major Development Overlay District. The third one is to modify the dimensional requirements for residential use in the village district.
And when? Again, please just repeat the date on that.
April 22nd, 2015, 6:45. I have a letter from Maya notifying the town it has earned a dividend credit in the amount of $785. That's a good thing.
Always good to get one.
Letter from Governor Charlie Baker certifying the town for its Chapter 90 appropriate appropriations for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $290,276. We have a letter from Mass State Lottery Commissioner offering a keynote monitor to a Warren package store at 958 Main Street in Warren.
I just think, all we have to do is vote that we don't have a problem with that, if I'm not right. Is there a motion to send the letter to the Mass State Lottery Commission saying that we have no problem with that award? So, second. Motion's made, and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Warren Citizens Action Committee, it says Louise Monbel, but I take it.
She's secretary.
Huh?
We're here.
Do you want to say anything, Jim, or?
We have a list, a, just a short list, but each one of us has our own little thing we use for us, and we're short.
Well, no, I take the first one, Jim.
It was, yeah, okay, yeah.
The first item that was included in our listing is maintenance and the budget for the town hall. Basically, I have two questions. One, first, primary and secondary repair work, is that all done? Phase one, phase two, is it done?
No. Phase one is done, and phase two isn't.
What's left and how long?
Um, we have bids coming in Thursday for the outside, for the protocol. We have contracts we got in yesterday that we have to go over, and the selectmen have to okay for the downstairs, and at the same time, he's gonna sign the permits to put the door in downstairs.
So that takes here a phase two?
That should, I believe, so.
Okay. Uh, next question. I believe there's $3,000 in the budget last year and this year for repairs. None of that money's been spent, none's been turned back in. Why?
I'd say, please.
Excuse me?
The police budget.
We have, if we have $3,000 for repair down there that can still be used, I think what we have to do is contact the police, asking the question pertaining to the $3,000 and telling them that it had, if indeed they have no intent of using it for anything down there, and that it can be used by the committee to do some more work.
Those that pertain to the bill.
And if they, no work can be done before the end of June, that to, let's request that that committee get together, get some bids in, and then encumber the funds. Anything else?
No.
Jimmy, anything from you?
There is a trust fund in place, uh, goes back perhaps 100-plus years. It was a, a block of money set aside in trust to the Town of Warren for the purpose of assisting and supporting, uh, young women that were unwed mothers. Um, do we have some, some updates on the amount of that trust? And has any of that money ever been dispersed to aid any woman in this circumstance?
Okay, I can, I can qualify my answer, Jimmy, is that I'm gonna tell you what I think, okay? The, like, the last time I knew, there was about $45,000, $48?
Forty-eight.
Forty thousand, about $40,000 in that account, okay? As far as I know, I've been, this is my 24th year on the board, no money's ever been expended from that. At one time, the board went back and looked at it, and this was probably about 20 years ago, to see if we could go to the legislature and break the trust and use the money for something else or put it into free cash. Here's the reason why. That fund was done before welfare, before Medicare, or anything else. Right now, it's almost a duplication of efforts, because you, the money, they can go to the state or to the federal government and get that taken care of. So the money's been sitting there, not used, and I think in the near future, we're gonna have to look into whether that, uh, can be broken and put into free cash and used for the benefit of the town.
There we go. Thank you.
Yep.
The, uh, third article, uh, point of interest was concerning the barricades or the barriers, the orange plastic barriers that are in front of the town hall. Uh, back, uh, first or second week in December, I was before the board with a question pertaining to their removal, and, and I think Dave, you suggested that hopefully before Christmas, absolutely, they, they would have in fact been removed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're now well into the second week of April, and they're still in place. Could you help us with some information about a potential date for removal?
Bob, it's the same information I just gave you. The, the contracts have to be in by Thursday, or the bids have to be into the contract to fix the protocol by Thursday. Thursday the deadline for when the, the bid's gotta be in, and we'll have to go from there.
So the bid will be in on Thursday, they'll make an award, and shortly after that, they'll take care of fixing the protocol, John.
Do we have a deadline for that potential fix?
Not until we get to, to bids. We have to wait to get the bids, go through the process.
How, how many weeks would you like to see, Bob?
Uh, how many would I like to see?
Yeah, on, on a completion of that work, so we can get moving on.
I'd like to see one, but I really have no idea. I'm not amazed. I don't know what they're gonna have to do, time-wise spending there. Hopefully, it's not gonna be that long.
Good.
But like I said, I'm not amazed, I don't know.
It'll be interesting what they say. You know, the snow we had this year, and nothing really came down, so everything's holding up pretty well out there, so it'll be interesting to see what they have to say when they go out there and look at it.
And how will that, how will that project be funded?
$23,000 left in a grant we had when we were fixing the town hall up, so there's 23, I think 23,000 in that. Uh, the committee has been given the approval to use that towards fixing whatever needs to be done at town hall. And if they're not gonna use the $3,000 in the expense budget, or mint, or budget for anything, that'll be added to be able to be used also.
And in the event that the, the project takes more money than that?
I think we still have money left in, I think we still have money left in that, and what was originally appropriated, and one of the things we're gonna have to do after stage two is done, is to figure out, uh, if we, if we have to appropriate more money to finish fixing it, but as of right now, we should have enough money to take care of that and a couple other projects.
I have a.
Knock on wood. Anything else?
Uh, yes, there's a point concerning the annual town auction. Has there been any action taken on drawing the list of materials to be auctioned? And has there been a date set for that auction?
Jimmy, you may ask this question. And we, we, we got that list, and we were looking at it, trying to figure out, um, are you talking about an auction of real estate or an auction of?
Personal property.
Okay, that, I don't have the answer to. I think what we should do on that also is to.
It's basically the way the surplus has said they have that much.
Well, I think what we have to do is, let's send a letter to all departments asking for what they have that is, uh, extra equipment, or what they think they can get rid of, include the police department on that, so that if there's bikes or anything else down there, we can do that also.
We have chairs.
Hmm?
We have chairs.
We have chairs.
I came in, downstairs.
So, we will, we'll look into that, James, and we'll try to do it as soon as we can.
Will the board be the deciding factor on the property to be auctioned? Or will that be left up to the department heads?
No, we will, we will send things, we'll ask things from the department head, we'll get that list, the board will review it, and decide what we're gonna do with that. The only two ways the board can get rid of, of things like that is an auction and/or if we could actually give something to another town, uh, because they're subsidiary of the state, so it would be, I mean, we've given things out before, we had the old fire engine that we gave to Three Rivers and so forth, but the board will look at it and decide what they're gonna, what they're gonna do with it, and I think we should hold it, uh, probably before the end of the year, fiscal year, fiscal year.
Fiscal year. Um, a list of the tax title properties, will you give us that?
We come up, we'll give it to you.
You have it now?
Yep.
Do you have an auction plan, or, or any kind of a schedule to start moving those, or?
We are gonna have an auction. I think we are gonna have, I don't think we are gonna have an auction.
So what are you gonna do with them if?
We're gonna sell the tax titles, which would be an auction, but it's a different type of auction.
Would that be soon?
Um, I don't know if we have enough of them to put it together yet. I'd have to talk to Bill.
You know what, with, I mean, the town made a fairly substantial amount of money last year by doing what they did to get rid of some of that stuff, and, and maybe by getting rid of some of them before they got to the point where they're so far gone that they can't be repaired. Me, have the, is there such a thing as like a procedure? You reach a certain point when the town takes a, a certain timeframe at that point, this written stone that says, "Now you've reached this threshold, you have to do this." You know what I mean? Because right now, I guess, it's just kind of like, whatever.
Well, we leave it up to the, up to the treasurer, because he's the one that handles it. Uh, we can get together with the treasurer.
Duh, it takes a long time. It takes five, six years.
Oh, I know. We can, we, we can get together with the treasurer and see if something can get set up.
I, I understand, maybe it takes five to six years, but some of us, 10 or more, that, you know, because there was no, I mean, I just think if, if there was a procedure to follow, and if something reaches, say, four years, five years, there's something that happens at that point, I, I think we wouldn't get, you know, like I say, it's gonna cost us, what, $60,000 to get rid of a building that if we had auctioned it off sooner, maybe, it wouldn't cost us anything. You know, I mean, we could've made it to all, maybe.
It's only one, one building that costs us anything to get rid of, and that's Chapel Street.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah.
And that was so far gone when we started, it was.
Yeah, I understand.
Would've been nice if the state didn't change the law, we could use it for training for the, for the fire department.
Well, you wouldn't even be doing, they would do that with Chapel Street, I also recognize it.
I know, but actually, they, they've taken care of stuff pretty close before, but can't do it anymore because of the asphalt shingles and because of everything else. But we will see what we can do. We'll talk, we'll have, Bob, I'm sure he can talk to Bill about it.
That's all we have, thank you very much.
Okay. We'll go to treasury warrants and invoices.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve payroll warrant number 84 in the amount of $32,941.06 and vendor warrant number 85 in the amount of $27,423.03 dated April 13, 2015.
Now, second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve invoice number four to the Pioneer Vallet Planning Commission in the amount of $7,927.82 for FY 2014 for the Community Assistance Program.
No second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor? Aye. Okay. We'll go fiscal year 2016 budget. Now, that we had a discussion on Friday, I'm sorry, on Saturday, we set up the what IFOs are on the warrant and so forth. When will the warrant be available?
Tuesday, first of January.
Excuse me?
Tuesday, first of January. The warrant's closed, but it will be ready for the board to sign on Tuesday.
Okay. So, the board will be signing the warrants for the annual and special town meeting on Tuesday. The warrants are closed. Nothing else will be put in there and if anybody wants them, we'll happily give a copy and put it after next week's Selectman's meeting. Other business, your turn. Bob, your turn.
Bob's it.
And I have nothing. So, the next meeting date is April 21, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. That's a regular meet... I'm sorry.
One question.
Yep.
Have we selected a moderator?
I'm glad you said that because I was just... I forgot to do it. We have a moderator. We called... Lorena called Westbrookfield and we're bringing in their town moderator to make sure he's impartial and so forth, so we will have a regular town moderator from Westbrookfield handling it.
And have we received any questions?
We have received a few questions, not very many. We also have the questions that were asked at the last debate and so forth, and somebody can bring them in before next week. We'll look at them and we're going to... Everything's going to be forwarded to the moderator and let him decide what to ask. Yes?
There's just so many questions that you asked, 10, 15.
I think that last year, the questions were limited. We had... We called a lot of people in. The only people we're calling in this year is if there is a contest in the election. The only two contests I know of, correct me if I'm wrong, would be Selectman and Treewood. So, we bring those in. I think that there will be discussion. I think the moderator will make a decision how many questions he wants to ask. The board is trying to stay out of it as much as we can.
I have the questions for Washington.
If you want to hand them, give them to... He's going to be the one that makes the decision. Barry?
Do I need to wait for you to vote on the articles for next Tuesday or could Lorena send those to me now because I need to put our book together?
I don't think there's a problem. We'll send you a draft copy.
Do you think there'll be any changes before next Tuesday or...
We're not making any changes.
There won't be changes, Mr. Chair, with your permission. There won't be any changes materially to the warrant. There's just some...
Vervage might be different.
Vervage might be changing. Unfortunately, I can't send them until I get clearance from town council and the board has...
So, as soon as you get them from town council?
As soon as I get them and they're ready to go, then you can help.
Okay. And how will you... Will you send them in a Word document to me?
I'll send them in a PDF file format.
Can you send them in a Word document because we're doing our page, what's our page?
Let's talk about that.
Just because I, you know...
I understand it, but let's talk about that.
I'm trying to save money if I can.
Go ahead.
Lorena had sent me a letter on April 1st. Do you know what? Do you have those records ready for me to pick up?